Last month, as the Chair of the Facilities Committee, I requested that the Administration review the Board's decision in 2016 to build a new high school on a new site. We thought it was an important juncture for our Superintendent as Director of Facilities to get their current perspective on the Board's direction. As most of the Administration was not part of the decision-making team, several years ago, this gave us an opportunity to look at all the information with fresh eyes, combine it with current cost analysis. Through this process, the Board has asked the Administration to consider evaluating the cost of expanding and renovating the current campus so that the Board can transparently share the true costs between the two options and affirm the decision to build a new school on a new site. Now, I've heard a lot of you call that the Tall Site. Before Mr. Tall owned it, Dr., I believe Giles owned it. And that's shared hands throughout, so it's a rather impressive site that we're very happy with. Although we had these estimates back in 2016, we asked for these costs in $2,020 values to truly compare the two scenarios. Further, now that we've hired a program manager who's just entered the room, Mr. John Thomas with Thomas &amp; Williamson, and what he does is helps us put together the scope of the building and price it down to what the cost will be for the true size of the building. And I've heard some information from the questions out there, and I think some of your questions were built on assumptions from a report that was secreted away from this in a decision-making process. So I wouldn't rely on those numbers. We believe we should be able to arrive at more accurate dollar figures since we know what the plan spaces and the space allocations would be for a new school. We're getting to that point. It's vital for our community to see all the work that's been done, the needs that have been established for the current school in sight, while also informing our goal to provide an excellent facility for the future of Quaker Valley. A new high school for Quaker Valley isn't going to kill Swiftley Academy, contrary to what people have said. Our two educational programs have marched along together, and I don't think a new building will affect that proud institution. We're committed to providing an outstanding educational experience to our students. Tonight, we're going to discuss how we're going to continue on that pathway to make that happen and how important the next few months will be in the process. I please ask you to please hold your questions till after the presentation because we're going to videotape the presentation and put it on our website for those residents who couldn't make it tonight. We look forward to hearing from you after the presentation. Now, I'm going to turn it back over to...
Actually, Mr. Floro, we will hold all questions until the end of the committee meetings before we break for personnel.
Yeah, but not during the presentation itself. Dr. Andrew Drake, I'd like to hand it over to you now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Floro. Good evening to everyone. Thank you very much for coming. Tonight, our team has put together a presentation taking a look back at all of the work compiled by the Board, former Board, former administrators, renowned experts, and resulting in a comprehensive review of our entire high school project. On February the 26th, we closed on a 13.4 acre piece of property off of Camp Meeting Road. This allows us to take one more step closer to the future of a new high school. Please note that we refer to this as our property now. It is the home of our new school. I'm happy to report that we were able to refinance bonds, resulting in more than a $4.7 million increase in savings to the district. This helps us to continue to move forward on a thoughtful approach presented by our finance department in which we are fiscally responsible while also meeting the needs of our students and our whole community. Over the last year and a half, I've asked many questions of our administrative team and many school board members. I wanted to learn everything that I could about the history of the high school and the needs for Quaker Valley and our students. This evening, you'll have the opportunity to hear from our team about the work we have completed and the decisions that are moving us forward. You will also have the chance to hear a preview into what will be happening in the next few months. It will be a very, very busy springtime for all of us. I look forward to keeping the website up to date so people at home can follow along with our progress as well. I know that you'll find the information very informative. Thank you to my team for their hard work in preparing for this presentation this evening. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Surlough and Mr. Goche.
I don't know if I'm going to mic and click at the same time. We'll see. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, our goal is to give you a facilities update and where we stand with the current high school project specifically related to what Mr. Floro spoke about in his opening, and that is, what is the true cost of a renovation and expansion if it were to be done in $2,020? So that in a few short weeks or hopefully within the next month or two, when we're ready to disclose, when the final estimates are in, the cost of a new high school on a new site, there will be a true apples-to-apples comparison with regard to those costs. So in 2016, this Board made a decision that a new high school is the very best value for our children and our community. That obviously meant a new high school on a new site. And so we're going to talk about why that decision was made and whether or not we, as an administrative team who have gone back to look at this a second time, would still affirm that that is the path that we should continue forward with. I can tell you without bearing the lead, we have already reached that conclusion that when you look at all of the pieces and the true costs, we still believe a new high school on a new site is the best value for our children and our community. First, renovating and expanding the current facility is complex and costly. Most are familiar. Our most recent renovation was Quaker Valley Middle School. When we renovated the middle school, we expanded the footprint of that school fairly significantly. The auditorium was increased, the recreational facility, the studio area was increased. We already had district office space that we could capture for classroom space, and we had an open courtyard in the front that allowed the district to capture space there. In that renovation, all of that expansion was able to be done on the current footprint. There was no extra land that needed to be purchased, and there was no significant earth work that needed to be done. And even in that renovation, the entire exterior, the structure of the middle school was kept. And the internal bones of the middle school, the load-bearing walls, were kept. The windows of the middle school are the same. The bricks are the same. If you walk through the hallways and go through the stairwells, they are the same. The library is the same. The cafeteria is the same. Most of those large spaces are exactly where they were. The majority of that renovation was a reconfiguration of internal movable walls. That is not possible in the current high school facility. There is no room, as everyone here knows, to expand the footprint of this building where it's currently sitting. There's already a lack of parking. There's already a lack of access. We have traffic concerns in the front of the school we've had for many years. We have parking concerns. We have foot traffic and particular traffic on that campus. There is no way to expand this building as it sits on its current footprint without significant expansion, and that's why this project is far more complex and costly than the work that was done at the middle school. We believe even in the end, the facility would be inadequate based on the fact that we would be taking a program and squeezing it into a building because you still have the main facility as the most amount of square footage. So all the rooms that are choppy as they are now, we'd still be squeezing the program right back into that choppy old building. Loss of campus resources to expand the building where it currently sits in the back will more than likely mean the loss of the tennis courts and the loss of the practice field, which is the only green space on that current campus. And finally, the impact on the educational experience of our children will be significant. And we're going to talk more about this. You cannot renovate this building with the students inside of it. We're going to have to go through lead paint abatement. There's asbestos abatement, and frankly, it's not large enough. There's no west wing to put everybody while you renovate the east wing and vice versa. So in more than likely, it's three years out of a high school building, and we'll talk about what the impact of that means for our students. So the reason that we have made this decision and made this reaffirming recommendation, we're going to talk about the educational program limitations of the current building so you understand fully why it's so costly to expand it. What's the impact on our students? What are the current geotechnical and site limits? What are the other building, physical building limitations? And then finally, as I spoke about, a less than desirable outcome. The current educational program limitations. Some of our core classrooms in that building right now cannot hold more than 18 to 20 students. They're too small. Our science lab classrooms only have 10 lab stations. We currently have no designated area in that school to offer our students who have significant needs, occupational therapy, physical therapy, ESL services, speech, and the like. We may do. We tuck things here. We tuck things there. But we could be more efficient just in the number of teachers and things to bring costs down just by being able to have classrooms large enough to hold 24 or 25 students. We currently don't have that in the high school. Our elective classes, several, our CAD lab, our manufacturing, computer science, our art, our family and consumer science classroom, only hold 16 students in the current high school. We have periods at the high school now where there are 100 students in study hall, and I hear complaints about that, and some think it's because we should offer more electives. It's not that we all necessarily have to create more elective. It's the current electives can only hold 16 students. We have a lot of students every year that want art classes and other classes, and the rooms physically aren't large enough to put them in. So you could tear the inside out and put it all right back, and we're going to have the same problem. It's just going to look newer. The main office, the school counseling office, the collegiate affairs department, there is not a single meeting space or conference room for any of those departments. There's one conference room in that entire school to have a parent meeting, to have an IEP meeting, to have program meetings. The current climate, there is nothing that we're going to keep from the mechanicals in this building. When we renovated our elementary schools, we kept the HVAC systems intact and bought another 10 to 15 years of life out of those mechanical systems, not in the current buildings. Every day, it's either too hot, too cold, or too loud. Each building, excuse me, each classroom in the current high school is run off of a univentilator. There is no true HVAC in that building. There is no central air. And the building itself, which has been renovated since 1926, last time most significantly in 1998, is still three kind of chopped-up schools sort of put together, and there's no central HVAC. Other limitations. Right now, we're all sitting in an LGI, and this room is used constantly for meetings and other programming in an elementary school. Both elementary schools have an LGI. The middle school has an LGI. Our high school, the largest building, the flagship of the building, has not a single LGI or small group instruction room in the entire building. We have no contemporary education spaces. We have no video production lab. We don't have a television studio like most modern high schools. We have create labs that are undersized. We don't have anywhere to offer a physical education studio-type classes. A lot of modern high schools have yoga, Pilates, and other studio-type classes. We have no space. That's our current locker room in the high school. This caged area here, that's the team room, as it's called. When teams meet, like at halftime with their coaches, it happens in that caged area in the current locker room. Our fitness center is used constantly by our athletic teams. After school, there's barely enough room for one and a half teams in it. There is no space to currently construct sets for our high school musical performances on a yearly basis. We're replacing lighting equipment. We're replacing sound equipment because we actually have to build the sets on the stage. So we're cutting wood and putting sawdust all over the mechanicals in the auditorium because there is nowhere else to build sets for the musical. The auditorium can currently not seat the entire student body. There are not enough seats in there to put the entire student body into the school's auditorium for our performance. The cafeteria was designed to seat 200 students. There are 650 students, and there are three lunch periods. So you just have to hope every day that 50 students are eating somewhere else or are absent for the cafeteria to be comfortable. The main kitchen at the high school is too small. A lot of the food's actually prepared at the middle school and brought to the high school students. The hallways and stairways are narrow, and they have very poor sightlines. So if you've ever changed class in the high school, Terun can tell you what's it like to change class in the hallway with everybody walking down the hall at the same time. You're walking like this, right? Okay? It's very crowded up there. Therefore, this building would need significant expansion, which we'll talk about in order to bring it up to more livable. Okay. Second piece, very important to us as educators. If we have to vacate the high school for three years, we are left with three options to educate our students and/or a hybrid of these options. We either have to rent another facility, like we did with Anthony Wayne when we constructed the middle school and the elementary schools, build a portable campus so bring portable classrooms in and put them somewhere on the campus for that to occur, or use other district school buildings and go in split shifts, which means the middle school goes for half the day, the high school goes for the other half of the day. The hybrid version of that is, we may only be able to find an elementary-sized facility that we can rent. If that's the case, and we decide that we're going to go with that option, more than likely, sixth grade goes back to the elementary schools. Seven and eight would probably be the two grades that would go out to the elementary building, and the high school would probably have to inhabit the middle school. But even if that happens, for those three years, for those three graduating classes, they have no high school athletic facilities. Their high school experience, they're not going to have a high school auditorium to do a musical. They're not going to have a stadium because that's where you'd be staging this project. They're going to lose three years, or we're going to lose three years of the high school experience for our kids. No student drivers and parking goes without saying, and more than likely, off-site parking for staff and visitors, they have to be shuttled to that campus. Now, this is an illustration essentially of what a portable campus would look like. And it may, you know, probably not be the best option, but just to give you an idea, here's 26 portable classrooms in the lower floodplain, and then here's the expanded addition off the back. We talked about encroaching on the tennis courts and the practice field. Monthly is 7,800 per portable classroom. You see obviously what the value cost would be for three years of that many portable classrooms. And that doesn't even include restrooms, cafeteria, kitchen, auditorium, administrative offices. You have to hope that you can somehow preserve those facilities for use while the students were on the lower campus, if that was the option that was decided upon. Next, I'm going to ask Mr. Goche, Director, if somebody's to come up and talk about the other considerations. Thank you, Dr. Surlough.
Being new to the district, I wanted to evaluate why the district chose not to expand or renovate the existing high school. So there's two things I looked at. Building limitations and a 2013 GeoTech Report by Garvin Bauer and Becco. So current limitations of the high school. Not ADA compliant to current standards. First thing I looked at when I went to school, looked at the main entrance where our captured vestibule is for security and our main office. It's not ADA accessible. The only ADA ramp we have is on the gym side of the school, opposite side. There's no captured vestibule there, no main office. In addition to that, inside the school, we have two ADA ramps. One surfaces cafeteria, the other one surfaces the arc room and CAD lab. Both of those ramps do not meet current ADA code. They exceed the maximum slope. We have three elevators in that. Those three elevators do not meet current ADA codes. So if we were to renovate the school and modernize those elevators, they would be too big for those hoistways. So you would look to abandon those elevators in place, look to see if you can build and cut out floors somewhere else to install elevators, or even looking to build towers on the exterior of the building for the elevators. Another one is student-staff parking, okay? Down the lower field, when they park there in the morning, somebody with disabilities has to go up to the high school. They go up, steep drive. I'm sure everybody knows going up the hill on the back. That does not meet code. That is about a 15% grade there. So that's double what that ADA slope is. Air quality concerns. So without having HVAC in the building and dehumidification, there's concerns of mold and mildew in the building. The lower level of the building, we have dehumidifiers in every building, okay? And those run nonstop. They fill up every couple of hours, got an empty amount. I think there's around 22 classrooms down the bottom there. The upper floors, we have window units. Those do not properly condition those spaces, and they offer no dehumidification. Mechanical, electrical plumbing, complete replacements, Dr. Surlough said. That's boilers, univents, exhaust sands, plumbing, electrical wiring. Sump pumps and unusable spaces. So we have a problem in the lower level with groundwater. So several years back, they put in sump pumps and pumped that water to floor drains. When that pipe comes out of those sump pumps, it's mounted on the surface of walls and went into classrooms. Because it was so loud and disruptive, they abandoned those spaces. Safety and security. I'm not going to get much into that because we still are dealing with our kiddos there, but there are needs for some updates for our security. Capsulated lead paint and asbestos. So we have many layers of paint, original paint that's lead. We have asbestos ceiling tile, which is up above some of our drop ceilings, mastic for our floor tile, and pipe insulation. Cracked foundations and walls, which structural issues that we'll have to deal with. There are a lot of load-bearing walls in the school. So as we were talking about our educational program, trying to open up the building and expand, that creates some difficulties for us. Shallow spread footings. So we had heard, hey, go up, add two or three floors. With those shallow spread footings, that creates issues for us as well. Lack of parking, traffic issues. Again, we're, we don't have the overflow parking that we'd like to have, so events such as graduation or tournaments in our gym, we're unable to hold. And everybody's aware of on Beaver Street during drop-off and pickup times, that's a lot of congestion there. Since I've been here, I've seen several accidents there. That's something that we have to deal with. And we also have lack of ADA. So we have ADA vans come and picks up kids, drop kids off. No place to load, unload properly. Geotech limitations. So this is from the 2013 Garvin Bauer Becco Report. So as you saw, a lot of the property is in a floodplain. That elevation of the field is at 706 feet. Famous 100-year flood elevation is at 713. For us to have a building down there, we'd have to be 18 inches above that, have a finished floor 18 inches above the 100-year. So you're looking at an eight-and-a-half-foot elevation change there. Deep foundations, again, if we're looking to add up or expand out, deep foundations will be need, those shallow spread footings, as I discussed earlier, wouldn't support anything. Retaining walls as well. So if we're expanding out, that back hillside will be significant retaining walls there. And same, if we did something on the lower field, if you're building up, you have to either elevate on pilings or have retaining walls down there. Groundwater flooding issues. I've talked about that earlier. Back in around, I think, 2005, there was a significant project to put a French drain around the building. It mitigated some of that, but not all of it. Again, we're still pumping out water with those sump pumps. So this study can be found on Quaker Valley's website. Again, it's the 2013 Garvin Bauer Becco Geotech Report. This is the floodplain that we were discussing earlier. Now, I'll turn it over to Mr. John Thomas, Thomas Woods.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here to talk about this really important issue. First, I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm the President of Thomas &amp; Williamson. We're a firm that does project and construction management. However, our specialization is in program management. And program management's a little different from what you see with a project manager or just a construction manager in that we like to think very broadly and collect up all of the elements that form the intrinsic components of the project. So starting here with this project here, you had had a number of studies done. The first one, first really significant one, was by Brain Spaces, and they did the actual programming of the job. They told you what the, what the project needed to be. We've also had some work done, some due diligence work by Jeff Phillips and his team. And they looked at the, they looked at the existing, the existing site, but they also looked at the new site and looked at all of the geotechnical issues and land development issues that would be, would be coming up as you develop the project. So my job was really to integrate what had been developed by Brain Spaces with the information that was available, made available by Jeff Phillips's group for the site, put it together, develop, finalize the program, the budget that would go along with it, the schedule, a delivery approach, and then ultimately get you lined up with some professionals that could, could do the design and the management of that work. I've been doing this work now for, for public schools for almost 30 years. I've had Thomas &amp; Williamson for 20 years, and I also did eight years with another large construction manager doing this, this same kind of work. I've done work in 20 of the, I'm sorry, there's, there's only 20. There's only 20 of the 43 school districts in Algeadie County that I haven't worked with. I've worked with a number of, of other school districts in Western PA. I've done $2 billion worth of projects for, for K-12 institutions. I've gone as far, as Portland, Maine, doing studies of this type. If you just go out and Google me, you'll find a number of, of school projects that have been done in this area, and you'll find my name associated with them. And most of them will be renovation projects. And there's a simple reason why. Every school district has existing buildings, and they need to maintain them. So I'm, most, the highest percentage of the time, I'm being hired to find a way to renovate a school. And I've done some very adventurous renovations. Perhaps my most adventurous was the two elementary schools of Brentwood. It was an urban setting. Two elementary schools built in the 1920s, and they, they had wood framing. The wood framing was starting to become dilapidated. They had a, a need to change the way their program was functioning inside the building. And that, in that project, the two of them, two elementary schools, we tore all of the wood framing out of the inside of the building, three-story building. Replaced it with all light gauge framing, and we did that in four months. We did it when the kids were on break. They left early in May, and so they had an early quit to their school year, and then they started late in September. We were able to stretch the summer break period of the four months. There was a time when you would walk into the, into the front door of that building, every floor was gone and the roof was gone. All you had was four walls. You looked up and you saw the sky. We got it done. It was a, it was a tough job. I've taken on some really tough renovations in my, in my 30 years of doing K-12 work. But I just want to make it clear to you, even though I'm evaluating a way that you could conceptualize doing a project, a renovation project and an expansion project on your existing high school, I want you to be sure that you understand that I am not advocating that approach. I am simply coming up with a way of demonstrating how it might be done so that you can make comparisons with, with the, with the proposed new high school project. So I have some numbers here that, that are my findings for, for doing the renovation. I think it's important to note that there's, there's a huge component of this that would be putting in addition onto the building. And Andrew touched upon this a little bit in his presentation of what limitations what limitations you have in the building. The existing building, particularly the original part, is really difficult to renovate. I've renovated them before, it can be done. Anything can be done. It just requires more money than you normally want to spend. But it's of a tile arch construction, which meant that, they were popular back in the nineteen twenties and thirties. You would build false work all through the building, forms if you will. And you would lay these tile blocks on top of all the forms. They would go into compression, then you put a concrete topping on top of it to form the floor structure. Then when everything was all hardened, you'd come back out and take the false work out from underneath the tiles. It's a compression structure. It works because everything is pushing against each other. If you come in and you take one piece of it out, the whole thing falls down. And you, your district found that out the hard way back in nineteen ninety-seven, the nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight project, when somebody tore down a wall and a floor just came falling down. And it's because it's really, it's almost building like an adobe structure. Everything is, is meant to stay in one place. So, when you, when you look, when you looked at the work that you did at your middle school, that's why that was so doable. You kept all the partitions pretty much in the same place. You didn't remove them, you didn't have to add the additional structure. Well, here, you don't have that option. If you were to undertake this project, there, you would face two problems. One, there's a number of the, I'll call them demising partitions. They are the partitions that are between the classrooms, as opposed to those that are between the classrooms and the hallways. Anywhere that a demising partition had to be moved, you would have to put a beam in there. So, at the end of the world, put a beam in, column under either side, and you take it down to a, to a foundation. However, you're dealing with a twenty-four-foot width, which isn't conducive to a lot of the large-volume spaces that you need. So, in order, your auditorium is not expandable. It can be repurposed, it's not expandable. Gymnasium, same thing. Cafeteria, library, all of the larger stand spaces, it would not be appropriate to try to make a really long, narrow library or a really long, narrow cafeteria. You could see what happens when you try to do that with your cafeteria. So, this component here, new addition to existing high school, a hard cost of twenty-five million. When we apply all the fees, it ends up being thirty-two, almost thirty-three million. Let me give you a couple of definitions on, on this page before I go much further. I have a column here called hard cost. That, any of you familiar with the process, would be the cost of the bids. That's the amount you're paying the contractor. So, the design would be done, you publicly bid it, it's a, it's a public job. Bids would come in, this would be the amount that I would expect the bids to be. But that's not, that's not the, that's not the total cost because there's more to the story. You have to have your soft costs. And there's a number of different types of fees and other costs in the soft cost category. You have your architect fee, some engineering fees, construction manager fee. You have permitting costs. So, you have your building permit, you have your land development permits that you have to pay for. You have FFNE fixtures, furnishings and equipment, which they're not construction costs, but you have to buy desks and furnish your building. You have your financing costs, the cost of borrowing money. You have contingencies for unforeseen conditions. And in a renovation like this, there are twice as many unforeseen conditions that you would encounter here as opposed to, to building a new building. The only unforeseens you really have in building a new building are unforeseens with the sun. That if you would hit the rock that would be extremely hard to remove that you didn't have identified in a report anywhere, that could be an additional cost. And I think if you look back to the, the projects that you've done here in the past, and I, from what I know, they were all very successful projects. But you all, you always had to spend money on, from your contingency to pay for change orders and things that, that weren't known at the time that you were doing the design. On a normal project, I normally see the soft cost percentage equalling somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent. Here, you're closer to thirty. I think it's twenty-nine percent for soft costs. And the reason for that is there's a lot of workaround costs that you have to do to make this happen. I don't know that this is the, the best way to do it, but certainly it's a way to do it, to put the portable trailers on the football field. That's a substantial cost that gets put into the soft cost category. Those costs, something like a temporary classroom development like you would have on the football field, that's essentially a lost cost. You pay for that, you, you use it temporarily, but you lose that value. So, that's, that's always an important thing to look at when you're. But I'm helping a client set up their project and making sure that it's feasible and that they're getting a lot of value out of it. I want to make sure that, that we don't have a lot of these, these lost costs. So, you add the hard cost, the soft cost associated with each hard cost, get the total cost, this GSF, that's the gross square footage. So, if we would do the out-to-out of the building, that'd be the gross area of the building. And two, two components here, one, the existing building at one-hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and the other seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred. I want to make, make sure that I crystallized this concept of gross square footage with you because in the future, when I come in to talk more about the planning of the high school, I'm also going to talk about NSF, which is net square footage. And that's the, if we were to measure the inside of this room, we would have the net square footage. And if we had the wall thicknesses and spaces for ductwork and chases, then that would get us up to the gross square footage. So, gross square footage, by the way, is it, it's kind of the standard metric that we use for making comparisons to top buildings. So, on this top line, renovation of the existing high school, that would, that would cost you a total of almost thirty-eight, thirty-eight million. And it would be two-hundred and seventy-three dollars per square foot. However, to make that happen, and I think this is, this is where it's easy to get lost in these numbers. In order to be able to take advantage of the existing structure that you have and build it out at a reasonable rate, you have to build a more expensive addition. You have to build a new auditorium, new gymnasium, new cafeteria, new library, and several other associated spaces that would go with that, quarters, toilets. And those, if you could just imagine the volume of those spaces, you know, gymnasiums are twice as high, auditoriums are twice as high as a, as a classroom. Parts of the, of the auditorium are three or four times higher than a normal classroom. So, that cost per square foot is much higher. So, the, the spaces that you're building on are coming at a premium. For those of you that are renovation advocates, those same costs will be in the new one. Those same costs per square foot, those high costs per square foot for the gymnasium and the auditorium and the like will be in the, the new building as well. However, they get aggregated with the cheaper spaces. This is something that I've, I've kind of counseled the administration to be cognizant of as we make comparisons to other school projects. When I first got here, people were making comparisons to Mont Levinon High School. Mont Levinon High School is like four times the size of what you need to do. They've got aggregation on their side. Their cost per square foot can come way down. You have, you have more, you have a higher percentage of expensive space. You don't escape it in, in the renovation option because you have to build that to be programmatically compliant. Relatively low site cost, one-point-four million. And the way I came up with this cost, I just did a project over at Fox Chapel, kind of a similar site at Curran Elementary. They had an existing building sitting on top of the hill. We built a new one down at the bottom and, and we renovated, I'm sorry, we demolished the existing building and then redid the site. It was about ten acres worth. So, I simply took that cost and I took the ten-acre cost over at Fox Chapel and I prorated that to six acres of development. I'm not proposing to redevelop the entire site. It's about ten acres over there now. Only, only about six acres would get redeveloped. So, I consider the site cost relatively about one-point-nine million. So, your total cost, and again, again, we'll do another, another level of aggregation. When we put it all together, we're at three dollars, three-hundred and thirty-five dollars per square foot. So, that is not, that's not a cheap renovation. That's a very expensive renovation. I also put some breakout numbers on here for you. These are, these are costs that are included in here, just to give you an idea of where some of the cost concentrations are. And I, I don't really see this being all that unusual. Whenever I'm budgeting a, we call them an MEP job, mechanical, electrical plumbing. Anytime you touch a building that's older than twenty-five years old, you're going to do a rather exhaustive MEP replacement project. You're going to tear everything out that's in there and replace it with new and improved systems. So, you can see that there's a, that there's a lower cost per square foot, almost half, in the, in the addition. This is where having the big-volume space kind of plays in your favor because you have, if you have a lot of smaller spaces, your mechanical, electrical plumbing costs are going to be higher. If you're handling one big, giant volume space of only a couple, a couple of units, you're gonna, you're gonna get the volume discount along with it. So, that's what happens there. Building shell, this is one of the telltale things that I always look for. I'm always looking for how much of my building shell is reusable? And how much do I have to rebuild? So, when I've been hired by somebody like Carleton, they were thinking about building a new, a new elementary school. They wanted my take on what they could do with the renovation instead of building, building a new one. And there were a number of other reasons, reasons why they were making, making these considerations. And I'll note, it's never easy. It's never just the cost. If it was just the cost, these meetings would go a lot, go a lot faster. There's a lot of issues like Andrew explained that you have to, these are difficult decisions. But when I, when I look at the building shell, I want to see that that building shell cost is as low as I can get. Usually, somewhere around twenty-five is, is a little bit more doable. So, your building shell is, is expensive to renovate. Not only that, the, the rest of the costs that I haven't broken out, they're all a little bit higher because you're working around something that, it's like, it's like working around an egg, that you have to, you can't just get in there and take pieces of it off. You hit it once and the whole thing will crack apart. So, you have to be very careful in how you're working around it. It can be done, but it just takes a lot more tender loving care to make it happen. So, I, I think that this, this line item here, the building shell, is something that says to me, you're kind of losing some value. That you're spending a lot of money to, to get that shell renovated. And when you're done with it, it's still gonna be, parts of it are gonna be a hundred years old. So, for that reason, I, I just don't see this as a feasible, feasible approach. Some people might argue that there's many other reasons to move ahead with this, move ahead with the renovation, and it's not just a cost issue. And I agree. But if you're coming to me and you're asking me what my impression is of it from a cost perspective and the value that comes through the expenditure that costs, I would have to advise you not to do it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I think Dr. Serteloff's gonna handle that. We're not done yet.
It's okay.
Oh, you want me to do this?
Yeah, just talk quickly about what you're doing next.
Sure. Yeah, this is kind of a preview into, into the next meetings that are coming up. We've prepared a lot of information. Oh, sorry, just the preview.
We've prepared a lot of information that, that you won't just have to take my verbal description of how the process has gone. I've documented the entire process that I've utilized and that I've picked up from what others have done in the past so that I can encapsulate that in a request for proposal document. So, that we can get proposals in from architects and engineers. I'm going to recommend that you get proposals from both in this case. And a construction manager as well. The design criteria, I think, is already developed. I, I haven't disseminated that all as a draft yet, but it's just about ready to go. I have some, some conceptual designs that I've put together just for pricing reasons. I don't expect them to be usable, usable designs and to be taken literally to go out and use them as their blueprints and go build your building. But I had to go far enough into it so that I could have a dialogue with the school district so that they understood what the numbers that I was coming up with, what they were attached to graphically. So, it's more like a, I call it a graphic accounting exercise. The, the process will go on for years. You have the, so if you're thinking that this is just something that the school district is going to vote on once and, and you're never gonna have a chance to give any input again, that's not the case at all. The input process is only beginning now. So, the school district will use the plan con process. Now, I think if any of you have been following this, there's a moratorium on state reimbursement. There are, there are some optimists that say that that reimbursement will be coming back. Whether you're getting reimbursement or not, and in Quaker Valley historically, since you have a market value rate ratio of point one, you've never really broken many records with, with your collection of reimbursement because the wealth of the school district plays against you. It's still prudent to go through the process. If nothing else, for the communication benefits that you get out of it. So, the, after the firms are selected to do the design, you'll go through the schematic design process, the design development process, and the construction documents process. And at the end of each one of those phases of design, there will be a presentation made. You'll, you'll see the latest and greatest of the designs and cost estimates to go along with those designs. Eventually, the drawings will be complete, will be put out on the street. And I see it as being like a two-year process to complete the design. Documents will be put on the street for bids. The bidding community will respond, bids will come back. And it won't be until then that the board votes on awarding the bids, that everything is, is frozen with respect to the design and the budget and to move ahead.
John, can I ask you one quick?
Sure.
When you were sort of teaching us about this as we were preparing for the meeting with those numbers, you kind of... you kind of gave us a lesson on square footage of the new versus renovated.
Yeah, that's down in the block. Thanks for reminding me of that, Andrew. So if you go down here, you can see that 139, that's the gross area of the existing building. 77,800, the area of the addition, pretty sizable addition. For a total of $216,906. That will be larger than a new building. And the reason for that is when you're taking all your program spaces, you can do your best to fit them into a, into an existing building, but there's always going to be some places where you have extra space in a quarter that you don't need. And it's better to leave that alone than it is to go tearing parts of the building down. Whereas when you're, when you're working on a new building, you're taking all those program spaces and you're wrapping a building shell around it to the exact size that you need. So there's an inherent economy that comes along with taking something that's being custom designed to meet your program.
Mr. Thomas, thank you again. Appreciate your presentation this evening.
Yes. One more, please. So we are excited tonight, obviously, to share that information with all of you. And so having that happen, we also plan to release a video for all of the community to share in this information. And we thought we would preview that this evening.